Good evening and welcome. We want to wait and see if Justin is in the attendees, Alex, before I begin. Yep, he is. So. Justin.
Hello.
Hey, Justin.
Hi, Paul. I know you came in a little bit ago.
Yeah, I'm just here listening to you and Artie.
It sounds like you're thrilled to hear Artie and I.
Talking about how your son's an adult and.
You're going to send him a bill when he doesn't attend the vacations, family vacations.
Well, good evening and welcome. So I'm Natasha Spada, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I'm calling the July 25th, 24 Planning Board meeting to order. This meeting of the planning board is being conducted in a virtual manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. As a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast to the town's YouTube channel and also via Zoom. As, as most of you know, and if applicable by the Needham channel. And it's being recorded for publication later viewing and administrative purposes. All the materials for this meeting are available on the town's website of needhamma.gov. And we understand that Adam Block is not able to join us tonight. But I'll call the role for the record for those of us that are here. When I call your name, please say you're present. Paul Alpert.
Present.
Artie Crocker.
Present.
Justin McCollin.
Present.
And Natasha Spada, Chair, I'm present. We also have Lee Newman and Alex Klee with us today, Planning Department. And so the first thing I would like to do is just go through our agenda tonight. The, the reason for this meeting, for the majority of the meeting, is to discuss the MBTA zoning initiative. And so Lee is going to start us on this, but let me just kind of go through all of the agenda items for tonight. We're, the first thing, we're going to do three things for it. We're going to have an overview of the current home zoning proposal. And that has seven parts to it that Lee's going to go through each individually. And what I would like to do is after each part, let's have a discussion because there's just a lot of information. The first one is she's going to explain the home recommendation, the two plans. The second piece is the zoning. She's going to describe the zoning to implement the two plans, and that's within four articles. The third one is district approaches. The fourth one is the amount of units getting created. The fifth one is dimensional requirements for the two plans. The sixth part is the zoning article base plan. And then the seventh is the zoning article neighborhood plan. So that, that's the first part. This, not, the, the second part is the presentation of the zoning changes for 100 West Street, and Tim Sullivan is here to discuss that with us. And the third part is a review of the AG comments. They're not the comments from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, which we, we will receive on August 1st. Which is when they complete their 90-day review. But then we did receive a few comments from the AG's office. And we had one additional piece, which was Chris Heap was going to give us an overview of the site plan applicable framework. And our permitting authority, but he was unable to attend tonight. So this is, this is one piece, the MBTA zoning initiative. After that, we're going to review the draft charge and committee composition for the large house study. We have an A and R plan after that. And then the report from planning board and board members and correspondents. I actually want to go through the correspondence first because some of these things are related to the MBTA zoning initiative. We have a, besides the open meeting law and taping of the meetings that Chris Heap sent us, which is what I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Joe Matthews sent an email on July 14th. And Jean McKnight sent an email about home on, 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 on July 24th yesterday. So with that, if there aren't any questions. Why don't we start, Lee, with the overview of the zoning proposal, starting with the home recommendations, home recommendations?
Okay, Alex, oh, yes, thank you. Maybe the next slide. Alex, can you?
Yeah, one second, sorry. That's not what I want. Sorry, one second. I just am not sure how to advance it. There we go.
Okay, so you guys have pretty much heard most of this information before, but I thought it would just be helpful to refresh everybody about what recommendations came out of, out of home. And the specifics of them, and then we can actually focus on the actual draft zoning in terms of, and take a look at how it actually implements what these recommendations are. So home basically recommended two plans for the town to consider. One is the base compliance plan. And the other is the neighborhood housing plan. And these plans are, the base plan is basically a plan that's kind of designed to, to more, more closely mirror the existing zoning profile. While making minimal changes to the dimensional requirements. And just only allowing, for example, housing to be introduced in a situation where it was previously allowed by special permit. And converting it to an as-of-right process in very limited cases, introducing it totally isn't as-of-right process. Versus the, the neighborhood housing plan, which seeks to make adjustments to these zoning districts. To allow more dwelling units to be built by increasing the heights and the FARs in certain select districts. And so just to remind you that the law required that we actually come up with a unit capacity of 1,784 units. And that the zone, that basically the base compliance plan, which kind of follows the existing zoning frameworks. Generates around 1,868 units. And then neighborhood housing plan, because it's allowing for greater density. Actually accomplishes 3,294 units. And then they, basically the land area for the base plan and the neighborhood plan is very similar, and that's kind of reflected in the acreage that's shown here. So the base plan covers an area a little over an acre, 100 acres. And the neighborhood plan covers an acreage a little bit over 92 acres. So does anybody have any questions on the first slide and then I'll move on? Okay, next one, Alex. So the decision was made to present this zoning proposal in a series of steps that kind of built upon each other. So to allow town meeting, the option of basically taking up the neighborhood plan first in adopting its provisions and the density that it enables, that would be the first article. And the article associated with that would be a map change, which basically is a rezones that, the parcels that are affected by that plan into, into that new zoning district that's created. And then if those two articles pass, then to further amend that zoning to allow greater density in going forward by allowing increased heights beyond the base plan. And increase FARs and actually making some modified adjustments to the actual district boundary. So that's happening in Article 3, and then the map change that's required to implement Article 3 is Article 4. So they're kind of building upon each other. So town meeting has a choice between how, in terms of how far it wants to go. And of course, I think we all hope that they go for the greater density given the housing need in the region. So any questions on that?
Yeah, can you explain either now or later if it makes more sense for you as to why there's a difference in the maps?
When I jump to the map, which is the next one, I'll show you what the differences are.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Secondly, but Paul, are you okay with the articles or do you want to go back to the articles?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
So I have.
I was just looking at the maps and I couldn't, I couldn't tell any difference and so I didn't.
Okay, so well, basically, the framework is basically that the district is kind of following the Highland Avenue corridor, you know, running from Huntingwell Street down, down into Chestnut Street, basically at, at the junction. And the differences and it's also capturing one apartment district in both, in both, in the, both a base scenario and the neighborhood housing plan outside of that corridor. Which are the apartments at Charles Court. So the difference is that in the neighborhood housing plan. The apartment district where the Avery School is and Hamilton Highlands is located, shows up. Alex, if you can point that out with a pointer, shows up and then in the base plan, and it's not in the neighborhood housing plan. So that district.
I'm doing that in case.
Thank you, Natasha. So basically, that's, that's one difference. I think the other difference is in terms of geometry. There's a apartment district that's introduced in the neighborhood housing plan. That is not in the base housing plan, which is at the intersection of Honeywell and Highland.
Oh, sorry.
There, at that, at that location. And then the other changes, Paul, that get made are really happening in the Chestnut Street corridor and the Chestnut Street Business District. We wanted to treat different parts of the Chestnut Street Business District differently, given their proximity to residential neighborhoods. So on the east side of, the east side of Chestnut Street and the area where the Hartney-Greymont property is located and where the Gardens, well, the Garden Street, Chestnut Street Business District, I think are have a lower density profile. So they've kind of be set, they're separated out into separate sub-districts. And then the west side of Chestnut Street becomes a separate district. So we basically took that area and fraction, and fractionated it. Because we're going to assign different rules to those different areas.
And part of those rules were because on the east side, there's a neighborhood right here. There are trade tracks that are separating on this side. So there are two different scales that, that, that we thought would be more appropriate for each side of the street.
Okay.
Could I, could I, Lee, Lee, can I ask one thing? And I, and I've never really understood this particular one, and that is between the two plans. On the base plan, it has the Avery district, but does not have that, that, that little, those multifamily units that are at the intersection of Highland Ave and Huntingwell Street. But then it flips and the neighborhood has that little unit, but it does not have the Avery. I don't understand why the, that, the, the existing multifamily in, in the, at that intersection is not on the base. And then all of a sudden, why does the Avery disappear in the neighborhood? I don't really understand that one.
I think that there, there, the, the, the committee was interested in presenting a, a unit count that, that they thought, they thought that would be more palatable to the town. So on the neighborhood housing plan, it doesn't grab that A1 district because it, that exists where Avery School is and Hamilton Highlands is located. Because it would have added units. And so, and to keep a, the, a unit count within a reasonable level, that district was not included. Natasha, that's my memory of what the process was.
Also, that's already been, that area has already been developed for housing. So we were thinking that if we wanted more units, we would put them in areas that were not developed yet. So because we're trying to keep the countdown, when we counted all of that, it, it became something that didn't seem palatable from all the community meetings that we had. And so we were trying to make it so that we could create areas that would actually create housing. And so we thought the Chestnut Street corridor was one where we would want to do increase the density. That, that way, the Avery School, which is already housing. We, we dropped that one off, not to say that as a planning board, and if the community feels like we want to add it later, we can do that later. But as, as a compromise to lower the number, it felt like that was, that was a good way of doing it.
Okay, so it was just, it was just a numbers thing.
Okay. Yes.
Any other questions on the maps? Okay, Alex, save the next slide. So this is just kind of a comparison of what, to give you an overview of what currently exists across these districts on the ground today. Which are the existing unit count, which is the 775 units total across the districts. What the capacity would be under the underlying zoning. Not the overlay zoning that exists in these districts, but the underlying zoning. And that zoning actually creates a capacity of around a little over 1,000 units. And then how many units could be generated under the overlay districts that Needham has, which are predominantly, you know, along the Chestnut Street corridor and at the Avery Square overlay area. And that, that zoning would generate approximate little, what's around little over 1,600 units. And so you can see the base plan generates around a little, around 1,800 units, which is kind of consistent with what the underlying zoning is doing. Which is what I was trying to express to you earlier. And it's the neighborhood plan that actually begins to add some capacity. And it's adding a lot of that capacity in the Chestnut Street corridor. Which is where I think we felt it made sense to do it. It's close to Needham Center. It's an area that's ripe for redevelopment, and it was actually an area that was actually targeted at the time, then, you know, the Needham Center plan was, was, was developed. So it's kind of getting at the, at that, at that corridor. That's kind of where it's being weighted. And there's also some existing capacity, I think, being generated out of the apartment districts with an addition of height.
It, we also felt that the existing zoning capacity for the Chestnut Street corridor was 370, the base compliance is 370, and we haven't gotten any housing. So it felt like it needed to have more density to make it. And part of that is because we have a lot of smaller lots. So we're hoping with this move, that it hopefully it would encourage some of those lots to consolidate so that there could be some opportunities for housing.
And is the only reason why there's a difference in Chestnut Street corridor right now between the base and the neighborhood? Since the special permit allows to approach that number, but doesn't approach that number is the main reason why it's not on the base, but the neighborhood is just to give another difference between the two? Or, or to make, or to make, or intentional within, in some ways, to make the base less?
Well, we wanted the base to be pretty similar to what we have today, but with housing in the, in the right places. And, and so, but we were trying to give a, a base compliance that then, you know, and then one that had the, the, the neighborhood piece. So if we started increasing the base compliance. And then it wasn't really part of the mission of having a base and a neighborhood, right? So we had to increase, we had to increase the base to make it meet the criteria in the right places. But it's very minimal. But I think we had to make that distinction. If not, it would kind of, it would get muddied.
I think, I, I think also already, the, you know, the base plan is representing the underlying zoning in, in that area, which is at two and a half stories. And an FAR of .7. But that district also lets you go up to four stories and an FAR. By special permit, which is what the 987 reflects. So really, the change in the, in the unit count that's being implemented here is the difference between the 970 and the summation of those, of the five, of the I don't know what is off the top of my head, but it's, it's, it's the summation of those three numbers.
In, in some ways, I remember, no, I mean, again, I can understand why, when you're going to have two, you want to have a little bigger differential between the two. But I can appreciate that. I thought when, in the zoning, I thought one of the reasons, or one of the things that was going to do in the zoning was the existing special permit capacity, have that be part of the baseline. Just take it out of special permit, just to make it part of the baseline. That's all. That's the main thing with that one. But again, I can appreciate the need for creating a bigger differential between the two.
I think this is also, we were looking at the business district, and we were looking at the industrial district to increase there. Because those two districts did not have units at the moment. So that, that was kind of the strategy to keep it not that far from the 1636. So I, I think, just in, in general. We were trying to make it so that yeah, so that, that the special permit could become, those numbers were closer to it or higher than those. It's just in the Chestnut Street, that's what we were trying to do for the neighborhood, you know, capacity plan. But I think, I think the biggest thing about this is creating opportunities because, again, zoning was changed and nothing happened. We only had one project. And, and the, the people, you know, developers have struggled, those that have been on the planning board, like Paul, for a long time, know that we have received many proposals that haven't gone anywhere. So we're really looking forward to, to being able to, to, to the as-of-right. Have opportunity for housing.
Yeah, I know, I know. There's been talk about the, the real struggle of trying to get the Chestnut Street corridor going. And needing to, having to make some change, make that occurring, not in, remove it out of the special permit category, or there's something as of right. Try to make this thing going. So I can appreciate that need as well.
Okay, if there are no more questions on this one, Alex, maybe the next one. So I just wanted to put together a slide that kind of shows what the base compliance plan looks like in terms of the zoning parameters. In terms of lot size and the height and the FAR and dwelling units per acre and parking units required per acre. And I would say that from the existing zoning profile that we have across the existing districts. There are probably two changes that are being made from the existing zoning profile under the base zoning. So the base zoning currently allows in the business districts, not the apartment district, and the business districts allows for two and a half stories. So here, basically, it's being adjusted up to three stories. And the parking requirement is 1.5 parking spaces per unit. Here, we're, we're bringing it down to one parking space per unit. And the rules for the apartment district are, are the same with, as they currently existing, the existing zoning parameters. With the exception of the reduction in the parking requirements. So you can see that overall, it's pretty much following the dimensional profile of these underlying districts as they currently exist. And of course, this zoning carries forward the 12.5% affordable provision that we currently have for the Chestnut Street corridor and the, and Needham Center and, and it implements it across the entire districts. So any questions about kind of the base dimensional profile? Okay, maybe Alex in the next slide. So this is the neighborhood housing plan, and I think, as I said earlier, it seeks to increase the overall density profile by, in large part, I think, fiddling with assists three variables, height, FAR, and dwelling units per acre. So maybe we should go through it. And generally, and generally what's happening is the height in certain select districts is being increased from three stories to four stories. The FAR is being adjusted upwards across the districts at varying levels. The maximum number of dwelling units per acre is either being eliminated or adjusted. So that's kind of just the dimensional profile overall. And then actually to incent mixed-use development. A half-story is being added in certain select districts. If there's, if there's mixed-use development and commercial development on the first floor. Or if, in addition to the 12.5% affordable housing provision, there's an additional 7.5% allocated toward workforce housing. So looking at it on a district level, in the apartment district. Which are our existing apartment districts, which are currently built out. The height is going from, on the base plan, from three stories to four stories. The FAR is going from a .5 to a 1. And the maximum number of dwelling units is going from 18 to 36. In the business district, which is the, you know, the Sudbury Farms block across from the high school. The height, the height's going from three stories to four stories. And we're introducing there an FAR of 2.0, which is similar to the FAR we have on Chestnut Street currently in the overlay district. And we're allowing that, that, that half-story, which is if, if the development is done as a mixed-use, commercial on the first floor. Or with workforce housing at the 7.5%. Avery Square Business is not changing at all. In the neighborhood plan, it stays the same as it was presented in the base plan. And I think, as I talked to, and the Chestnut Street corridor is kind of being, is just basically being divided into discrete components as a function of what the land use goals are for the varying areas. So along the west side of, of Chestnut Street, because it's bounded on the west by the MBTA railroad tracks. And it's kind of separated from the residential neighborhood on the other side. It was felt that that area could accommodate greater height. So on that side, the height is being allowed to go up from three stories to four stories. The FAR is being increased from one to two, which mirrors what's happening currently in the overlay district at that location. The limit on dwelling units per acre is being eliminated. So the dwelling units get, that are developed are a function of the geometry of the building. And it's the incentive for mixed-use development is being added at four and a half stories. Or with the introduction of workforce housing. Then on the east side of Chestnut Street and, and on the Garden Street area of Chestnut Street. It was felt that it was given its proximity to the residential neighborhoods. The height was not increased. It was kept at the three stories. Although the FAR was increased up to two. And the dimensional limit on dwelling units per acre was eliminated. And to encourage mixed-use development, it was set at three and a half stories rather than the four and a half stories that you see elsewhere in that corridor.
Lee, I take it that the half-stories in, in the additional housing development, because that doesn't count to the MBTA, because we're saying if it's 7.5 workforce housing, we're putting a perimeter on that condition, so it can't count or can't account.
Well, I, I think it allows for the mixed use, right? So you can have a taller first floor. So that, I think that's.
No, but does the additional, but you're saying we're putting a, we're putting a requirement on there about 7.5% workforce housing?
No, this is bonus. I mean.
That's an incentive, a bonus.
Yeah, we're, we're giving them a bonus.
Yeah, so this is a bonus. So it, but it doesn't count, but that bonus doesn't, additional doesn't count towards it. And towards our numbers to the MBTA Community Act.
No, we, we modeled it basically on the as-of-right model, not on the mixed-use model. On the Hillside Avenue Business District. We, I think, in that case, I think we, we did, we did not increase the height there. We, we minimally adjusted the FAR from a .7 to a, oh, to a 1. And we established a dwelling unit limit because we were concerned, we, we, about how many dwelling units would be built there. And then on, when what is currently on the neighborhood plan, or excuse me, the base plan, the industrial district was treated the same. The two industrial districts. So there's an industrial district that Crescent Road in an industrial district that kind of runs along Hillside Avenue. It was felt that these two areas are really different. And so I think the, the goal was to allow for, to, on the Hillside Avenue section. To allow an increase in FAR greater than what would have been allowed at the Crescent Street area. And to establish a, basically a dwelling unit per acre limit of 24. So Natasha, I don't, if, does anybody have any questions? Or Natasha, was there anything important that I didn't cover here that I should have covered?
No, I, there's just so much information. I was trying to highlight each one, so because it's like otherwise. No, I think you covered it all. I think in general, we were, we were trying to, we, we, we actually went through each one, just as we did to look and see what is existing and, and where are the right places to, to increase the density.
Okay, so now let's move into the fun part, which is a zoning language, which is designed or intended to implement this plan or this vision. So, so as I think I mentioned, the first article is the article that actually creates a zoning framework for the base housing plan. And so maybe I'll just go through the different sections of it and just tell you what they are. And if you have any questions on how it's been put together, we can, we can take it up then. So the First Amendment that's being made, there were some definitions of terms that are gonna, that are, that are being used that we felt needed to be updated in the, in the foundational definition section of our existing zoning. So that's what the First Amendment does. It adds a definition for applicant. It adds a definition of multifamily housing. And then in, in our existing zoning, we have a list of class of, of districts. So we add this district, the multifamily overlay district as a new district, district to the foundational zoning. Okay, no questions on that. So the next piece, I think, is really the meat of what's being proposed. And this is basically the, the creation now of the new multifamily overlay district. So it begins with, the first section deals with, with the purpose of the district. I don't know how much detail you want me to go through on. I don't know how much detail you want me to go through on this. Just give you the titles or actually explain what the sections are doing. Have you?
I think.
So the Cliff Notes.
Cliff Notes. Okay, well, so basically it's just basically.
That's my vote.
Okay, so the first, the first person is basically establishing what the purposes of the district is. The second one is talking about scope of authority. And it's basically saying that the rules of this district, you know. The that the other rules of the underlying district remain in in effect, except as they are altered by the rules of this new district. And that an applicant is basically. Has to choose which set of rules they want to develop their property under, whether it's the underlying district, whether it's the Avery Square Overlay District. Or whether it's this new zoning district and that that once they make that selection, they are bound by the rules of the district they choose. So that's what the scope of authority section deals with. I think the next one just identifies. The sub districts that we're creating, which are the districts that come off the map. Section three seventeen three. Is a section which deals with the definitions that are being used in the bylaw. In terms of its, in terms of its regulations. And section three seventeen fourteen.
Page three.
On page four. Deals with the use regulations. It's basically just saying that multifamily housing is allowed by right. It defines what the accessory uses are that are permitted, which are basically parking. And kind of and cus- and then the customary accessory uses to a multifamily use. So the next provision deals with the dimensional. So we kind of went through. On the tables in a in a more broad framework, but it kind of lays everything out here. So the first table is dealing with the lot area, the frontage and the setback requirements for the districts. I know we didn't spend a lot of time talking about the setback standards, but they pretty much follow the setback standards as they currently exist. In the underlines it in the underlying districts. The next table, three seventeen five two. Deals with the height requirements for the district. And it lays out the exceptions to those heights in terms of, you know, ventilators or towers on the roofs and what those rules are. And introduces in the Avery Square Business District. A special permit provision to allow multifamily housing up to four stories by special permit. And then the next one, the next table, three seventeen five three. Deals with the bulk and the other requirements. Again, as I've laid them out in a more generalized framework. In the earlier discussion. Three seventeen six deals with the off-street parking requirements, essentially establishing that one parking require, one space per unit. And then linking this back to the parking and design standards that we have in our zoning bylaw that reflect what we apply to comparable uses. Section three seventeen seven deals with, you know, development standards. I think three seventeen eight. Lays out the requirements for the affordable housing. In terms of, you know, the percentages and how the units have to be distributed across the development. And these rules are comparable to the rules we have in our other zoning districts. Section three seventeen nine lays out.
Can I add something? I just wanted to ju- just add a couple of things. One is that. Under the three seventeen five point three, the building bulk and other requirements. For A one and the Chestnut Street, we have eighteen, maximum eighteen dwelling units. Just we we for those specific ones. And then for the three point seventeen point eight for affordable housing. Any multifamily building with six or more dwelling units. She'll have no fewer than tw- twelve point five percent of housing units as affordable housing units. So just to, just to. Make sure that, you know, that 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 you knew those couple of pieces of information.
Thank you, Natasha. So the next part was basically the site plan review process. And that lays out what the submission requirements are for the plan. And a timeline. And although Chris Heap isn't here to talk about this, I will point out that the the timeline that we're using. We're using parts of forty A and and kind of parts of our own set of rules here. So. Once it, when the application is submitted to the planning board, it's distributed to all the boards, the DPW, Engineering Department, Police Department. Fire Department, Design Review Board and other agencies for their comments within thirty five days. We are going to follow the notice requirements that are detailed in forty A in terms of public publication and notification to a butters. And then a decision has to be made on the application. Within six months of submission.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add on this one, on the submission requirements. The one thing that we talked about is landscaping, including trees to be retained and removed. And the other one beyond what we typically have. And then the other one is the projected traffic volumes in relation to existing and reasonably anticipated conditions. Based on standards from the Institute of Transportation Engineers and prepared by a licensed traffic engineer, so that we get accurate numbers.
So then, so I think that's. So the basically the site plan. Approval. Lays out the circumstances under which the planning board can grant waivers. It allows the developer to look at project phasing. It allows the planning board to adopt design standards for these different zoning districts, which would lay out the design and the development goals for the districts.
And those design standards, that's something that we haven't put together yet or that we're we're talking about. Is that correctly?
We're working on those on those currently. I mean, we have design standards for the Chestnut Street corridor. They were done. I think that we've been working with Mark Lucy from the Design Review Board, who's looking at. How they might be modified or updated to be implemented in in the remainder districts.
Hey, I'm sorry, Justin, you're.
Oh, so just a question with regards to the previous slide. My understanding, or at least that what it was explained to me, is that. With regards to traffic, the scope is limited from the planning board's authority. To be specifically on the site itself. The impact of the site to the greater area is not necessarily as something that we can. Use to issue or not issue, you know, a waiver. Is that is that correct? It's really. Flow within the actual site itself, not, you know. The impact of a developer, you know, at Muzzy, I'm just using this as an example. I know it's not part of this. And and their impact on all of the neighborhood roads around. Is that is that correct? Or can someone clarify that? Or is this something that Chris Heap would need to clarify?
I think Chris can cal- will clarify, but it's my understanding really that you're really kind of dealing with the area immediately around, very, very close to the property itself. And so your your reach is, your reach is not very far.
Really good question, because I don't see it itemized here as to like what the extent of that traffic.
I think Chris, I think Chris can talk to what your authority is. I think that's why I had hoped to have him here tonight to talk to about. How what your, what your parameters are and your limits are. So he's agreed. He's available to attend the next planning board meeting, and he'll be able to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
With Leah, Leah and Natasha, just wanted to touch base on for affordable housing. Is there any, and I didn't see it in the minute. Means there may not be in there. Was there any bonus given? If they do greater than they need the requirement for affordable housing? I don't know what that bonus would be, but is there anything in there for a bonus if they do more?
No, there's no bonus. It's currently drafted. There is none.
And Lee, related to. You know, some of the things we've been talking about, like solar and things like that, there, I don't think that we have any bonus on solar either, do we?
No, it's not addressed here.
So that, I mean, it might be something we might want to consider as well.
So that's the first article. Does anybody have any further questions on that, the framework of that? Okay, well, then the second article basically is just the map change article, and it's just basically going, it basically provides a meets and bounds description of all the. Areas that are proposed to be rezoned and, you know, it places them in the in the in the new zoning district. So now we get to. Article three. Which is the neighborhood housing plan, and it basically. Assumes, you know, the article one has been adopted in the form that is written in. And makes the changes necessary to implement the neighborhood housing plan. So the first change is making any adjustments that are required in terms of the names of the districts that are actually going to be. Rezoned and and regulated under the neighborhood housing plan. That's what the first section does. The second section modifies the purpose of the district. Because in this, in the neighborhood housing plan, we are introducing mixed use development, which was not a variable or was not a part of the base plan. So it's changing the purposes of the district to reflect the addition of that additional land use. And then the third section basically makes modifications to the schedule of uses. Because now we're introducing, you know, mixed use development as an alternative with that density bonus up to the four and a half stories. And defines the retail uses that would be allowed in the business and the Chestnut Street business districts. In the first instance by right. And then the second, it lays out those use and which are predominantly kind of retail uses, offices, banks, craft, consumer, professional service. Consumer service uses, personal fitness establishments. Dry cleaning establishments, and then uses that would be allowed by special permit. And those are pretty much your food uses. Which kind of follows the framework of how the zoning is structured in the other zoning districts. And so in the next section basically is are the tables, and it's just modifying those tables in terms of. You know, the lot area, frontage, setback requirements. To make the height adjustments, the FAR adjustments that we had talked about earlier. And building height changes. Across the districts and the FARs and the bulk requirements. And that's all happening under section five. So it's just basically replacing and updating those tables to reflect the greater density. Paragraph six, I forgot what that one does. Oh, basically, this was, paragraph six is establishing some design standards for how a mixed use building was going to be done. And basically that the entry to the units themselves needed to, you know, happen. The ground floor units needed to be located to the side of the rear of the building because you didn't want to break up the front facade. And that the, that the ground floor should should contain only the restaurant uses or the office uses. Excuse me, or the food uses. And then it introduces the, under paragraph seven, the provision of. The seven and a half percent. For workforce housing. And the change in height that's that's afforded by that, by that modification. And I think that's pretty much, and that's it.
Then the rest of the pages are again describing, right, the maps.
Yeah, and the method, the fourth article is basically the map modifications need to be made to reflect the boundaries of the neighborhood business district. That would be implemented by the third article.
And any questions on any of this? Paul already, Justin, Paul?
Can we go back to the. With the chart. In that seven-page presentation that you had at the beginning that compares. The. The basic plan to the neighborhood plan. Well, wait, yeah. Yeah, no, you go back to right there. Comparison of scenarios. Okay. So. In Chestnuts, in the Chestnut Street area. Right now. Under existing, under the existing zoning. We can have three hundred and seventy units. And it looks like that's as of right.
No, it's by, it's by special permit, but it's because housing is always by special permit. Currently, but if that's the underlying zoning, which has the lower FAR, the point seven and the height of two and a half stories.
Then we've got the existing zoning with overlay special permit. Of nine eighty seven.
Right.
So the base compliance plan. Gives us the same three seventy. As we currently have under existing zoning, it's not over. With some adjustments to the, to the bulk requirements, right? And it's as of right instead of special permit.
Correct.
Then we've got the Needham Plan. Which has. Twelve hundred, little, little more than thirteen hundred units. So. I guess my question is. When we're on the floor of town meeting. And and we're discussing. The differences between the neighborhood plan and and the and the base plan. And I'm getting the sense from some people who I've spoken with that. That they want the base plan. You know, they don't want to. It's too much on the neighborhood plan, but you know, I. I'm seeing here that. That if we adopt. The base plan. Developers can still. Build. The the nine eighty seven includes the three seventy, so they could build an additional six hundred units. It's not an additional nine eighty seven, it's an additional six hundred.
Yes, it's an additional six hundred.
So if we adopted the base plan. We could still. Developers could still build in the Chestnut Street corridor. An additional six hundred units.
With the special permit.
With the special permit.
That's right, yes.
Those two adopting the neighborhood housing plan. Which gives them instead of an additional six hundred units. Approximately an additional nine hundred units, so it's three hundred more units than that. And what do they really, what what does a developer really? Really gain? By having those additional three hundred units or even building his six hundred extra units under the. Existing zoning. I guess, I guess my point is that. Under what we currently have, if we adopt the base compliance plan. We've got eighteen hundred and sixty eight units. But we really can still get an additional six hundred units, bringing it up to twenty four hundred units. Between twenty four and twenty five hundred units. It's just that a developer on Chestnut Street needs to go through the special permit process. Maybe the FARs. Maybe, maybe the bulk requirements aren't, aren't as.
Yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head. I think that's the whole point. I think, so we, if we keep the base compliance at three seventy. We have not had any housing on the Chestnut Street corridor, even though by special permit, we have nine hundred and eighty seven units, zero. That I believe, I believe zero has been built, right? Go ahead. Well, part of it is because the the FAR and the and the dimensions don't make sense for developers. So if we want anything built by MBTA, which is trying to make it as of right, we need to create some density there and it's adding, you know, a story. It's not, it's not a big. Change, but it makes for better density because they, all those lots are really tiny lots. So in order for them to be able to make it viable, they have to have more density. And so.
The den- the density is actually the same in the overlay. I mean, well, the different, let me describe the differences. So the density, the overlay allows four stories. The neighborhood housing plan allows four stories. Um, the neighborhood housing plan allows four stories. Um, the, and it, it allows it, well, four stories along Chestnut Street and three stories at Garden Street, which is kind of. Consistent with the neighborhood housing plan. The FARs are the same, the two. I mean, so it's a process that's being changed and it's, but it's also the half-story that's being introduced, Paul. That gives you a higher density that you don't have. Yeah, that, that you don't have. And you also have an as of right process and people, um, we, we heard from some developers that that's been a constraint to their moving forward.
It has been.
Correct.
Because it creates, because it, it creates uncertainty.
I don't understand why that's such an impediment, but ma- ma- you know, Natasha, you're in the business, maybe. And Lee, you deal with these developers, why?
You, you need a cer- certain number of units to be able to make the projects viable and um, and so tha- that it, it's holding them back. I mean, we heard from the developers and the real estate attorneys on the, on the, on hone, right, that. We need to have a, we, we came to a compromise of what should be as of right to incentivize this to occur. And even so, we're still going to have the problem. Of having the smaller lots. Um, but, but we felt that it was important to make it as of right. If you keep it the way it is, we will not incentivize any housing. And that seemed like one of the key places that housing. Um, you know, it, it would be advantageous. It's right in between the two, you know, two train stations.
But I guess my point is. That if the base compliance plan passes. And the neighborhood plan, the neighborhood housing plan doesn't. In order to better incentivize developers. To build those extra six hundred units under the, under the existing zoning with overlay.
Mm-hmm.
Why can't we just? Propose to town meeting and am- amendments to the existing zoning with overlay. District on Chestnut Street. To, for that particular area separately. Give.
Nine eighty-seven by right.
What they would have gotten out of the neighborhood housing plan to make it more attractive for them. To build those extra six hundred units.
I, I think, well, there's, there's also, I think, a difference in use. I have to go back and check, but I think. I think that, I don't think that standalone residential is allowed in Chestnut. I think it's only allowed in a mixed use context. So when you're seeing those units being created, I mean, just double check that, but that's my understanding. That's my memory of that district.
I'm just, I'm just wondering whether that would fly, whether that would fly with town meeting. That we can get an, an additional six hundred units. Uh, if, if. If town meeting doesn't like the neighborhood housing plan specifically. Does it make sense for us to then go back and say, all right, let's amend the overlay district on Chestnut Street? To make it more like the MBTA requirements. To incentivize the building of those extra six hundred units.
And make them as of right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's uh, which gets back to. The original planning question. What do we want to see along the Chestnut Street corridor?
I th- if, I mean, if you look at the changes that we made, Artie, I see your hand, you'll, you're next. Um, if you look at the changes that were made, they were pretty minimal. And, and it yields something more palatable. Again, these, this, it's not like we're basically, you know, it's, it's not like we're. Raising everything, you know, everything that's there will probably remain and this will be. Um, housing that will be in addition to what's already there. So you're not going to get all of those units. Um, but you need to create opportunities for those units. You know, a couple of them at least to be built or more to be able to, to create housing. So. It, it felt like if that, within the nine eighty-seven, which is a special permit, we're still not getting any. We felt like we needed to, to create better zoning and that's why we changed. Um, and that's why we also have the two sides of the street be different to be able to, 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 you know, to manage the size on either side of the street.
That's why I'm suggesting if the neighborhood housing plan doesn't pass. The basic plan passes, the neighborhood housing plan passes. Planning board, and I'm not going to be on the planning.
Add the six hundred extra.
Seriously want to consider. They want a serious glitter amending the, the, the Chestnut Street overlay district. To figure out what's more palatable, let's, so that we can get more. More house.
A good idea. Yeah, if the base plan, yeah, if the base plan is the one that's selected, we should go back and revisit that area. To increase it. It might be more, even more than the six hundred if the six hundred hasn't even yielded anything. But, yeah. Artie?
Yeah, thank you, Natasha. I'm going to um kind of go on Pa- Paul's train of thought here, but kind of go back to one of my earlier questions. And that is, you know, it, it's not uncommon to create a bigger division between two choices. To sometimes. Uh, I don't know, incentivize or force or the, the, the other choice, you know, the larger choice or something like that. To, you know, intentionally create a bigger division. Um, and, and I, and I've always questioned kind of the Chestnut Street, that part of it. Now I understand that if we just make that. Section be, you know, bring the neighborhood zoning over to that part there, that they'll be. They will be closer in numbers. They will simply be closer in numbers between the baseline and neighbor. And maybe they'd be identical. I'm not sure, or only three hundred apart, I'm not sure exactly. Um, and. But now, Paul, are you saying that the same, at the same town meeting have an article ready? Which changes the zoning for the Chestnut Street?
I'm talking about, you know, we, we, we're going to be in front of town meeting. Um, sometime in.
October.
Uh, in October, right?
October, yeah, we, it's a very, it's a very short window, extremely tight window. I mean, at, at your next meeting, you're going to be finalizing, you know, the zoning. Um, we're going to have the impact, input back from the state, so. We'll know any adjustments we want to make and we'll be finalizing the zoning so we can advertise it for hearings the first of September. This is a very tight window.
So, so we present this to town meeting in October of twenty-four. And. Hopefully, the basic will pass. And the neighborhood will, may or may not pass. If the basic doesn't pass, then we're at square one. And we're not in compliance with the state. But if the basic passes, I'm not saying we have it ready for October. I'm saying, we see what happens in October, and if the basic passes and the neighborhood. Um, does not pass. We go, I, I think we should. Go back to the drawing board for either next May or next October of twenty-five, maybe twenty-five. To then propose an amendment to the Chestnut Street overlay district. To incentivize more, more um hu- more housing there. In accordance with, with, with home. Cause maybe the issue isn't just that, you know, it's, it's, it's more than Chestnut Street. I think part of the issue that I'm hearing is the whole concept of thirty-three hundred units is just. Too many units for, for some town meeting members. It's, it's too big a change. Too big a change for them, but.
So let me, I just want to continue where I was because I was curious, ma- making sure where you were, Paul. So I, I think we should at least give some consideration to bring that, that aspect of the neighborhood plan over to the base plan. Now, the numbers will be closer to each other. If for some reason people feel the neighborhood plan has to be. Closer to where it is now, then throw the. And then, then put the um Avery building and, you know, building across the street, Avery apartments and the building across the street back into it. Back into the neigh- neighborhood one, which was taken out for the sheer, for the main purpose of keeping the numbers down a little bit. Um, but I, but I think we should at least consider putting the Chestnut, that part of the ne- neighborhood over into the J- base plan. That's all. Please consider it.
And, and, well, also the Avery Square, there's already housing there. So if we're really trying, it's again, it was, the neighborhood one is about incentivizing housing. So if you already have housing in some of these areas. Um, and they're already, the apartment district, we didn't, you know, we would prefer to have in other areas that make more sense, like the Chestnut corridor area, but. Um, uh, Paul, we were trying to get it so that. There, there were two distinct plans. One is, one is base plan with, with, with enhancements in some districts that currently don't have apartment. And then have, what we heard was the compromise from, some people want twice as much housing. Some people don't want any housing. This seemed reasonable by neighborhood based on what should be as of right and so.
Disagree with Artie and say, leave the current base plan alone. Because if you start increasing the number of units in the base plan. Politically, I think it's going to be more difficult for it to pass. We want to get the base pla- at least the base plan passed so that we're in compliance with the statute.
Well, we, we have to remember that when you look at those numbers in the base plan. In, in, in your brain, in people's brains, sometimes they're comparing it to zero. Well, it's not zero. It's comparing to what already exists. Or the allowance of whatever could exist.
That has not yielded anything.
Yeah, no.
The piece that you have to say, like, we're adding a couple more, that, something that doesn't work. And will not yield anything unless every, you know, somebody raises every single building in town. And starts Needham from scratch, which is, you know, unrealistic, completely unrealistic.
Yes, so, so the baseline is not adding eighteen, eighteen hundred seven housing. It's not something.
Really only adding a, you know, a couple and, and barely because. The developers don't think that it's, that, that the zoning works for, for creating. True housing that would actually be lot, you know, viable. Justin, I want.
Sure, and I think this was just tangentially mentioned, but we, as, as we sell this. Um, it has to be emphasized that this is, we're not building thirty-three hundred units. There is uh, almost a hundred percent certainty that Needham will never reach thirty-three hundred units. This is, this is a, this is, this is. You know, a, a, a number that is, you know, a, a true maximum, but no, as Natasha, you know, would have to be completely raised. And, and Needham needs to be completely rebuilt in order to fall within the scope. So we're, there are, there's a lot of, there's a lot of folks. That, that do talk about this that are, you know, the sky is falling, the sky is falling. There is, we, we've obviously tried to incentivize uh mixed use and, you know, i- in the past and it's gone nowhere. Um, you know, sure, maybe this will work, but there's a good chance that this is probably not even going to work. So, you know, as we sell this. Um, you know, we, we need to be aware of that and, and, and really, because I think we need to definitely push for the neighborhood plan. Knowing that that is not, that, tho- those numbers are, we're not going to come close to those numbers. But at least it's moving the needle.
Correct. Thank you, Justin. So any other questions before we start talking about um proposed zoning changes for Hundred West Street?
I just, I just want to let you guys know what the schedule is like and we're kind of where we are. So we um got the comments, you know, back. Well, I, I'll, I'll hold that, I guess, to when we get to the AG's comments and kind of give you a summation of where we are and next steps. Go ahead, let's, let's just go forward with one hundred West, Natasha.
Okay. Great, um, so. Just sorry, I'm just grabbing my papers. Um. So I think, so Tim Sullivan is here. Tim um sent us a, a letter. Um, stating some of his, his comments, that I believe there are four or five comments that we wanted to review. Um, and so Tim, why don't you go ahead?
Sure, thank you. Um, again, just for the record, Tim Sullivan of Gulston Stores. Uh, here on behalf of the owner of Hundred West. E D Hogan from Well Tower, the owner is also uh here in the audience, um, if we, if we need her input. So, um. Yes, this is a follow-up to the um productive conversation we had on June eighteenth with the board. Um, as we said at that time, we followed this process closely, which I think we all know from listening to. Lee's description and, and, and everything was a very thoughtful uh detailed process. And when it was done, we, you know, asked one of our architects who works with us regularly to say, you know. Can we look at this zoning and see if it works? Um, if you were to do multifamily on the site. Um, good news is it largely does for our site, which was great. Um. But during that process, there were a few things that um didn't, and we thought that we should raise them. And have a conversation and that, that's what we did on the, the eighteenth, uh, which was great. So. My action item from that meeting was to uh actually write down what we talked about. So I did that and submitted um a red line of the zoning. To the board with the letter. Um, and I'm here to sort of uh cover those and, and happy to ask questions. So. Just in summary, what those changes are.
I think you should go one by one because Lee and I have reviewed them and, and we've gotten some comments from. Uh, and Gene. Sent us some comments too, so I wanted to go through one by one so that everybody can have comments on each one.
Absolutely. So I'll, I'll provide a summary and then I'll stop and go through if that, if that sounds right.
Sure.
So I'm just going in the order of my letter, um, which is, you know, the first point. Relates to the front setback along Highland. So the draft zoning uh similar to the underlying Avery Square has a fifteen foot maximum setback off Highland. And what we talked about at the last meeting and what we've suggested in our draft is to. Maintain that, but to incorporate some flexibility so that, you know, the, the main facade line of the building would generally be at that fifteen feet. But there would be a recognition that there may be certain points where courtyards or driveways or landscaping. Really to better the streetscape along Highland would be something that, that would be allowed. So that's the first. Edit that, that we provided and that is um found in section three point. One, seven, point, five, point, one footnote F.
So let's go, yeah, Paul, why don't you start? Let's see who has comments about this and, and I also have comments. Go ahead.
Have, why, why do we have a maximum setback to begin with?
We have a maximum setback because we wanted to make sure we had a s- a strong street edge along Highland Avenue. At the time, the. The, the, um, the how, Avery Square was studied, I think it was in nineteen ninety. And there was a desire to make sure that there was a strong street edge. Um, and the buildings were actually put right at the street edge and they weren't set far back from the street. They wanted more of an urban um setback. So um. In order to ensure that buildings weren't set too far back from the street, there was a maximum that was established for Avery Square.
But. That was thirty-five years ago. Times have changed. We're now talking about. Um. Complying. Rezoning something, because we're only talking about making amendments to. To the new overlay district. We're not talking about changing the maximum setback to the current. Zoning and the current zoning overlay district. We're only talking about this one here. And I'm just wondering. Why, and Natasha, you're the architect and maybe.
Yeah, I, I'm going to comment in a second. I just wanted to hear everyone's comments first.
Whether it just makes sense to delete the maximum setback?
No. Sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't help myself, but I think that we can work with the. With what we had written and what the proposed is, right? Because there, I, we understand that anyway, any, Justin or Artie, any other questions before?
Not on that particular point.
Okay, so there's two pieces here. One is the setback and then the second part, Paul, a- a- and, and everyone else is the uh. The, how, what to accommodate, right? Because there's an et cetera. So we don't want to leave the et cetera there. We want to say these are the things that it could accommodate, right? We want to be more specific and that was something Gene also commented on in her letter. So the first one is. Uh, we, I understand that there's, for all, for, for everyone, a datum line. So it says clarification that a fifteen foot maximum front setback applies to the main datum line. Of the building. And a datum line is the line, um, is the line of the building to where the dimensions, you know, are referred to in the. In the, in the drawings. So where you begin at the property line, it's, you know, it sets at a line and that's the datum line, right? So um, it's something we use a lot, but it's not a common terminology. So we just, I just want to make sure that was clarified. So what, what they're trying to say is that they would like to have larger periodic front setbacks, which I think, which I think is fine. Um, and so one of the things that Lee and I talked about is. Um. Did we say seventy percent of it to?
Seventy percent of, I think of, yeah, the, the, the building had to be at seventy, the, the most of the building, seventy percent of the building had a, had to meet that. Fifteen foot max.
Right, so that we can still keep an edge, but the thirty percent of that facade then could be set, you know, could be. Um, accommodated to allow for the larger periodic setbacks. Tim, so that, that was one of the things that we had. Thought about, you know, that, that maybe that, that way we can keep it continuous, but give you enough flexibility to be able to do different things, if that seems reasonable to you.
Yeah, and it's something, you know, we don't, it's hard, right? Because we don't have anything in mind yet. Yeah, and it's something, you know, we don't, it's hard, right, because we don't have anything in mind yet, um, so. Certainly can, I think probably best for us to just kind of ask that general question. Uh, of a, of an architect that we work with and come back to you, but I, I understand the. The concept and certainly, you know, we're, we're amenable to that and, and the et cetera. You know, maybe we could say something like, or similar site design features that enhance the streetscape. I, I hate to just have a finite list, because if we all come up with a great idea, when we make an application, then we're out of luck that we can't do it. Um, but, so that would be my preference, uh, to have something that gives us that, that flexibility. We think we've captured what they would be, but.
Yeah, we just can't have et cetera, because that could mean anything, right, so with that, because this is as of right. We're, we're totally fine working with you on it, but we also can't let it be so open that all of a sudden. Um, you know, you come up with something that we have no say on, that we don't feel is appropriate, so. Uh, one of the things that we wanted to make sure was that it wasn't, like, y- you didn't have a curb cut there, because that, we have to look at traffic, we have to look at other things, so. We, you know, the other, the courtyards, landscaping, amenity areas, all that sounds fine, it's just the et cetera. We just wanted to make sure.
Well, the drive-bys, I think, too, we had a question about.
Yeah, I mean, there could be a scenario, and I, and again, this is hard, because we don't have anything, but, you know.
Hard for us to, just to let you know, and we're just kind of going, you know.
Yeah, I mean, one thing that we. What you may do and, and everyone may want to do, um, as you get into it, would be to split the building. So that there is an entrance there that aligns better with. Um, you know, and, and is a primary entrance versus whether, that may be something you want to do, we shouldn't foreclose that.
No, you shouldn't, but it can't be as of right, because we had, we just had a project for a medical building where. The, the, how you entered and exited the site was, you know, we had to take into account other streets that were coming in and all of that, so that's why. This is as of right, and so, we'll be reasonable with all of that, but we just want to make sure that. Um, what we put in there gives us flexibility to be able to review, um, the site, you know, how will you enter and exit the site.
So, wh- why don't, why don't we look at that?
Yeah, take a look at it and let us know.
And circle back on that, on that point, okay.
Maybe, and maybe if you need something, you know, that you can do it by special permit, if there's something that you're thinking about that. You know, doesn't kind of work from an as of right perspective, you know, which would give us the discretion to look at it.
Right, can we do the et cetera by, by?
Yeah, okay, we, we will look at that one. Um, so that was the first of the four points in the letter, so the second one. This is really what I would say as a, as a math cleanup, uh, we, and we talked about it last time, so. When you look at what was put out there and, and all the things we just went through in the charts, the height setbacks. You know, all those things. We can, we can do that, but, um, if you build to the height that's allowed, if you maintain the setbacks. You, you won't get the hundred and eighty-seven units that is, um, assumed in the base compliance model at an FAR of one point O. Because of the inefficiencies of residential building corridors, elevators, that sort of thing, common areas, so. We're not suggesting that we change any of the dimensionals, other than to change the FAR from one point O to one point three in the as of right. And one point four to one point seven in the special permit, so that the math works, so that's the second. And that's, oh, and, and in both of those scenarios, consistent with the Avery Square. Overlay, uh, parking would be excluded from, from that calculation, so that's, that's the second set of changes.
Okay, so the first, why don't we talk about the first one first, because parking is separate, right, like just the first one of changing it to one point three. Um, so, uh, just Lee, were you gonna say something and then I completely interrupted?
I was just gonna say, Tim, the only parking that's excluded in the overlay district and, or Avery Square is if it's internal to the building. It's not excluded if it's, if it's, if it's a separate structure.
So I think if, given the way this site lays out, I think if you don't have the structured parking, whether it's. I mean, it, it's sort of immaterial, I guess, either way, I mean, it's still structured, it's still occupying the site, you know, th- th- this project wouldn't, wouldn't work. You wouldn't get the hundred and eighty-seven units to park it on this site.
Let's go through the, let's go through the FAR first, and then let's go through the parking and we can look at the site, because the site is a, a very long site. Um, you know, so we were, we took a look at it and I took a look at it in many ways, so. Right now, just big picture, because we were trying to figure out without a project, really. How this would work and what the, the planning board would feel comfortable with FAR, understanding that the hundred and eighty-seven units. Doesn't work, right, with the, 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 the scenario that you created, right, i- it's not. So, right now, the site is about, and I'm just gonna say approximate, it's a hundred and eighty-seven thousand square feet. And you have a one FAR, and you have a three-story building, which means that every floor plate is about sixty-three thousand seven hundred or sixty-four thousand square feet. That's about thirty-four percent of the lot coverage. At a one point three. Uh, you have two hundred and, about two hundred and forty-three thousand square feet. Based on a one point three FAR, um, at three levels, it's eighty-one thousand square feet. Um, and that means that the site has a lot coverage of forty-three, would have a lot, lot coverage of forty-three percent. Um, what, what, what that's telling me, it's, so you basically, it's a, you know, approximately a nine to ten percent. Change of lot coverage from what it is today.
I'm not so sh- Well, I, I, I don't have all that math, Nat- Natasha, but the one thing I would say is. We have a s- very significant setback on the residential side of the property. It's not changing when you change the FAR and the fifteen-foot and the rear and the other side aren't changing, so. Whether you change the FAR or not, you're not changing the area of the site occupied by the building under the dimensionals that are already in the. In the, um, home zoning, we're not proposing to go out further or wider. We're just saying that if you build within the box that's allowed up to the height, up to those setbacks, the FAR is not one point O, it's one point three.
The existing building, as it sits on the property right now, is one, is a one FAR.
Is a one FAR.
Correct, and but the difference is already, hold, allowed the setbacks to go a little bit further on one side. And we're not, we're not proposing to change that, we're just saying if you build to that, the FAR is one point three.
But right now, it's three stories with one point O, so again, explain to me how it's a one point three?
So, um, I don't have that.
You're adding, here, I can, I can bring up the.
So, so, Tim, you're talking about going closer to the railroad tracks, for example, right now, there's, that's kind of in term, you're talking closer to the railroad tracks, I'm not sure about the south side, but. Closer to the.
So the, the setbacks that Hone set out here are, um, I'm just trying to flip them. So you have. The, the ten, um, you have the twenty in the rear along the MBTA. You've got the fifteen in the front. And then you have, um, a hundred and ten on the residential side of the site.
Right.
Right now.
Excuse me one second, Tim, Alex, but by, do you by any chance have the plan that Tim sent originally?
Um, is this one that's in the packet or something different?
I think it's the one in the packet.
Okay, let me just check.
And I think technically, since this on, technically, since this on West Street, the MBTA side would be the, would be a side setback, technically. Lot of rear setback.
I think the, the way the zoning is drafted, you're gonna be at twenty feet along the MBTA right of way, regardless of, of whether side or rear. Because the side and rear is the same, it's ten, and it has a footnote that says if you're along the MBTA, you're twenty.
Got it, thank you, Tim.
Thanks for. Sorry, Natasha, what was it that you wanted to see?
Floor plan. That Tim had sent earlier. So maybe it was, it isn't in the packet now, we received it previously.
Um, we have the site plan, is you want, you want the site, well.
Yes.
The site, that we approved the, uh, maybe the, the approved, um, site plan that we did for the building, is that what you were interested to see?
Yeah, yeah, the one that.
Let me see if I can pull it.
Okay, so my question, so that, there's a piece of land that is adjacent to it. That my understanding, Lee, is that that's not included in the a hundred and eighty-seven thousand square feet, is that correct?
It was a. A piece of land is not developed, I mean, it's, it's, it's count, counts toward the FAR, it's part of the lot.
So, ma- maybe I could. Um, this site is located partially in the Avery Business District. Um, which is the building plus a little bit more, and then it's the, the parking lot. So if I'm standing at Trader Joe's, I'm looking at the building on Highland, my back's to Trader Joe's, the, the parking lot on the far left is in a residential district.
Right.
So, on that side of the building, Hone set a hundred and ten feet off the property line. That, that is a little bit, um, shy, the, the end of that hundred and twenty feet measured from that side. Is a little bit shy of the existing building, so in other words, if you build with a setback that Hone allowed. The building is a little bit bigger than the existing building on that side. Yeah, there you are.
Right, so.
Hey, Tim, why, why, wh- are you, are you guys thinking of going?
That's this area here.
That area there, yeah, so. The hundred and ten, and, and I don't, you know, I'm, I'm roughing it out, so don't, but the hundred and ten lands somewhere around those parking spaces that Hone set.
Right, you have thirty-three feet, I, right, like it goes thirty-three feet in from, from the residential district. Is that, is that correct? So it's like around here.
On this plan, the building could go a little further left, like into those parking sp- the, the first row of parking spaces adjacent to the building. And comply with the setback that Hone set. If, if you do that, the FAR is not one, it's one point three. We're not, you're still just building to the box that Hone set. But it's one, it's one point three.
So. I'm still, I'm, I'm trying to figure out the math, because if one is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand square feet, right? That means that every floor of this building is about. Almost sixty-four thou- sixty-four thousand square feet. And if you, for a three-story building. Right?
Right.
So if you have a one point three, that's a hundred, two hundred and forty-three thousand square feet. That means that the footprint would be eighty-one thousand. So it has to be bigger if it's.
It is, it is bigger than the existing building, but it's not bigger than the box that Hone allows for.
Oh, that the Hones allow for, I thought you meant the box of the existing building.
No, 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 that, if you were to draw a box showing the building envelope allowed by Hone setbacks.
Right.
And you expand it in a couple places, you'd go a little closer to west, under Hone's scenario, you could go a little closer on the left side. And if you do that, it ends up ticking it up and it's one point three, it's not one point O, but we. But I think one point O was carried from the underlying, assuming it would be the same. And it, it's different.
So you're saying if you do this, if you add this, it would end up being with the one point three, so the ten percent extra, basically.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Yes, and that's what we understood also, sorry, I, I thought you said that this footprint was one point three.
I'm sure I wasn't explaining it well, I'm a lawyer.
I'm sure you were, it's just, it's very complicated, that's why I'm kind of, I had to go through it and do all the numbers, so, so. Um, the one point three, when we, when I looked at it, and this is for the, uh, for my fellow planning board members. It seemed reasonable to do the one point three as of right. Because, uh, you know, that, and probably, we were, the lot coverage was thirty-four percent. Before with the one point three, it's forty-three percent of the site, that seems reasonable. To, to me, but I, I want to hear from the other planning board members.
I was comfortable with the one point three.
Yeah, so am I.
Yeah, I think, certainly, I think considering that, there's that, you know, space in the L going to the tracks. Um, you, you, we're talking adding thirty-three percent to the footprint, basically is what we're talking about. Thirty, I think it's thirty, thirty percent of the footprint, I think that works. Um, one question I had, Tim, is, are you guys thinking of going to a fourth floor?
Um, so, good question, so, the fourth floor is an option by special permit. And so, just to, to round out already the FAR discussion. We, we would propose the same adjustment, because it's obviously another floor up, so. Um, on the fourth floor, we'd propose that one four has the same adjustment of point three, so it becomes one point seven. Um, you know, it's, it's too early to know, I think we're hopeful that a fourth floor would work, we are proposing some things that we think would make it. Work better, there, there are slight tweaks and I'll talk about them in a minute, um, but yeah, I mean, I think that would certainly be something.
So you're not, I just want, I just want to confirm, you're not asking for a fourth floor as a right? You're fine.
Oh, no, no, that's still by special permit, that would come to the planning board, just as Hone described, just, it would be a one point seven instead of one four.
And, and to let everyone know, the one point seven would be three hundred and seventeen, three hundred and eighteen thousand square feet. But if you divide it by four, it's still pretty close to the eighty-one thousand, that would be for the one point three, so you would still have the same footprint.
You'd actually be a little less, I think, and, and Natasha, you, you, I'm sure, you can tell me, but I think because of the architectural treatment on the Highland side. You might even be a little less on that fourth floor.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
But I'm just, I'm just trying to, because we don't have a project, I'm just trying to kind of, big picture, so everybody understands that, even though it's one point seven. That one point seven is still reasonable on this site.
And, and then, then, and, and you know, initially, or as it exists right now, that fourth floor is, I believe it's not a full four floor, it's a setback. Four floor, and so if you're filling in part of that L, that makes.
That's another thing we need to talk about in a second, right?
Anyway, if you're filling in part of that L, it makes the setback a little bit easier, certainly, to accommodate something like that, but anyway, that's part of the discussion, as you're saying, Natasha.
Right, so that, that, let's talk about that fourth floor setback, I think there was a recommendation, Tim, I think of. Uh, having the, the setback on Highland, but not on West.
Um, yes, although we thought that was more, we thought that's how it had been always talked about, that's why we had said it that way. Um, the facing Highland, and on that one, so, as, uh, the way Hone had proposed that. Was that to qualify for the fourth floor special permit, your project either. Needed to be stepped back at that upper level twelve feet, or have a forty-five degree, um, pitched roof, peak roof. So what we're suggesting is, keep those, but also allow for. Some other architectural treatment that may work, so that you're not foreclosed from getting the special permit if you come up with a. We collectively, assuming we're all sitting there for the special permit, um, we collectively come up with a better. Approach to soften that fourth floor, so it's really just allowing a third option.
Right, that, so, that, the, I mean, we definitely want it on Highland Avenue, but when we looked at it again. All of the buildings surrounding, first of all, there's the park on the right-hand side. Um, all of, where Trader Joe's, all of those buildings are one-story buildings, and then next to it, it's a two-story building, like across from the park. It feels like, because that's such a narrow elevation. That if you do a four-story elevation without some type of step back, it would, it would look very, very tall. So that's why we had originally put it on both sides, and, uh, a- again, I mean. I, I think we'd be reasonable if it was something reasonable, but it felt, especially as we were just talking, if nothing else is developed but this. To have a four-story, tall and narrow piece, felt like. Uh, we would want to review what that looks like and, and not just have it as of right.
Would plus. This would definitely be part of the special permit in any scenario.
I think we talked about having the setback for that area too, given, given its location.
Yes, plus, plus with the, if there is a fourth floor there all the way out towards the edge, that, that casts more shadow into the park area. Primarily during the winter time, but it still casts more shadow into that area, and it would be probably, considering there's a park there, we probably want to. Reduce how much shadow is thrown onto the park that, heading, heading to that area.
But as a special permit, I think that you would still have leeway of coming up with proposals that could be even better, right?
Yeah, that's right, I think that if we added West, so it's Highland and West, we'd still, assuming the board's comfortable, you know, keep that. Uh, third option available, basically, as sort of a, you know, so we have options to come to you with, that you can decide.
Right, but it's a special permit, so that rightly, I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, the four-story is, is a special permit, yeah, so if he adds, if he adds basically the stove roof and the, and the added provision for the flexibility, it's by special permit, so.
Right, so we would be able to review it, and.
Yep.
We're all for a good design, it's just, we just want to make sure that anything that's as of right or any, that's reasonable, right, so that. Um, so that it's, that, that. so that it's, that that, you know, that it could be done well and it could be done quickly, which is the whole purpose of the MBTA communities.
Yeah, we agree.
Okay, now parking. So Lee, do you want to talk about parking a little bit?
Um, well, I just want to say it's a foundation that, um, I mean, Needham's, how Needham, how Needham manages the exemption of parking from FAR really is not uniform across the town, in Needham Center, um, parking and Chestnut Street corridor. Um, parking, um, unless if it's not underground, it counts toward, you know, the the FAR. Um, and of course, in the business center, it is exempted out. Um, in Avery Square presently, in the overlay district, the only structured parking that was, you know, not included in the FAR was parking that was internal to the building. So, um, if you weren't, you know, if it was an exterior garage, it counted, it was included in the FAR calculus, calculation. So I noticed that, you know, what you're proposing here is essentially, you know, I think a parking, that the parking garage be exempted out, you know, structured parking, um, certainly the the interior portion of a building, um, um, that kind of fits in what with what we had originally proposed. Um, or currently exists within Avery Square. Um, but deck or deck parking, rooftop parking, all that counted in in the in the other districts. And counts in the overlay district current currently.
Well, I, so I guess I would offer a few things. Um, you won't yield the hundred and eighty seven you need to comply with the MBTA Communities Act if if parking is 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 structured parking is included for FAR. But in addition to that, I I think the existing, and Lee, you know, certainly know better than I do, but my, my suspicion is that the existing carve out is reflective of the existing building. Which has parking within it and when this overlay was drafted, you know, candidly, people, you know, it was drafted around redeveloping an existing building, which isn't what would happen here, you know, you would be raising the building and to do a multifamily project, you'd be, you'd be building a new building. Um, and there's a enhancement that home thoughtfully included here, which is to say that on one side of this site, you have to have a hundred and ten feet, which is very significant uh, as open area and and open space, which can't be used for parking. So if you want to have those kind of amenities and sort of yield the units that we're looking to yield as a town to get there, you you need to have structured parking, if you include it in FAR, you can do, you can either exclude it from FAR, you can increase the F, increase the FAR. Or I thought, you know, consistent with Muzzy or, you know, children's or any of these things, you know, if you carve it out, it's, it's cleaner, you know.
I think Natasha, we talked about, you know, carving out interior, um, if, you know, parking that was interior to the building, carving that out from the FAR, parking that was underground, carving that out from the FAR. But if it was gonna create a new structure, which was gonna be with more lot coverage or massing, that it had to be included in the FAR. Isn't that where where you were going this afternoon, Natasha?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the question is, we don't have a proposal, so it's hard for us to understand, are you putting a huge parking garage, like, you know, I mean.
Next to, next to the tracks.
And and there's like, it's such a long site, so we're trying to figure out wh- where that would, where a parking garage would be, for the Muzzy side, it was very different, the site is huge, we even specified where the parking garage could go. Um, in an area that would be less obstru- obtrusive to all the neighbors, but where, where, do you have any idea of where this parking garage would be located?
No, I don't, I mean, to be, you know, to be perfectly honest with you, not yet, I mean, we don't have a budget, but, you know, I suspect that, I mean, you have to have you you, if you look at the site, I mean, it's most likely, I I don't know whether it'd be like a Texas donut, as they say, you know, like, um, the the Charles River, um, landing kind of situation, or you don't know it's there, um, which you would specifically need to exclude structured parking if that's the case. Or if it were standalone behind the building, adjacent to the tracks, but, I mean, no one's gonna design. I mean, I think we all sort of, you know, you see these, these, you know, multifamily projects around towns like Needham and no, no one's gonna design it and stick a big parking lot, parking garage there that, you know, isn't i- integrated into the site, you don't have to, I mean, in order to get it, so most likely, the building will screen it.
Right, the thing is, again, because this is as of right, whatever we put in here, we won't, we have a lot of say as to, you know, we we don't have it for the design, so that's why we're trying to figure out what is the intention of it and the site is so narrow, where would that go, that's why we were saying that as an FAR of of three or four stories, um, having it being integrated in the building as it is now, uh, uh, and as others, like, you know, the old TripAdvisor building and things like that, then we can kind of understand what you're thinking. So any, I know that they had done the hundred and eighty seven units, but any, with the more information, I think we would be able to make a better decision without compromising the as of right, um, you know, lack of decision like for us later, I don't know, Artie, Justin, Paul, what do you think?
Well, I I I, the fourth floor is a special permit, so it's really, this is only the as of right for a three story. Right, because that's, if if they were to do a four story and that special permit, then we could certainly opine and talk about, you know, uh, the parking and the garage or whatever it may be, um, so it's really only in the third, I do, I mean, honestly. I, I think we need to find a way to get somebody in here, this has been vacant for a long time, we have overall dimensional requirements. Um, I I I don't, I don't know if it's, if if it is going to be realistic to get what we want to get, I'm just looking at Google Maps here. Um, from, um, you know, from not excluding, um, you know, the parking from the FAR. Um, but that's that's one person's opinion, but anyways, I'll yield to anyone else.
Paul.
Yeah, I'm confused about something, be be, because what I was hearing Tim saying before was that to get to a hundred and eighty seven units, they have to expand the building out to the new setbacks. The home setbacks. And so if you're going to have an apartment building that in order to get the hundred and eighty seven units, you're filling up the entire area that you can build on for that building with, um, with within the setbacks, you're basically at the setbacks. Where there's, where is there any place else to put the parking, because the parking has to be within the setbacks? So I don't even know where you're going to have a place to put a separate structured parking garage. You've got to put the parking in the building or 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 underground, there's no place else to put it. If you are already building the building all the way out to the setbacks, in order to get a hundred and eighty seven units. Did I miss something there, Tim?
No, I I think you're right, except maybe a nuance, Paul, that you could have like a, a building that's around a structured, so it it's effectively part of the building and screened by the building, but it's kind of in that hole and that, you know, we can't say.
And you're, and you're gonna get your hundred and eighty seven units?
If you're able to exclude that from the FAR, yes, you can, yes, you can. But, you know, right now, if you were to go to the, you you, I'm sure you have, but if you go into that existing building, the the parking within the building is like underneath the building with a garage door, right? So, what what we, you'd need to do something more than that, you know, and whether it's you put the parking structure, you wrap the building around it, you know, or, you know, there is some of that under and then, and then there's something behind, we don't know. But you could have a scenario where you've got a build, uh, you know, a parking structure with the building around it and that that would be a parking structure, and we can't have zoning that doesn't exclude it, because then you're gonna blow the FAR.
Well, I think, I think if it's interior to the building, it would be excluded, I think that's what we're talking about, and what what if we just excluded the parking, the portion of the parking that was interior to the building and the portion of the parking that's under the building?
I think interior to the building is a problem, because it could be screened by the building.
Mission of the interior to the building.
Right, exactly, we we can't have that, I mean, it it, interior to the building to me is like underneath it, like it is, uh, on the existing. I don't know that you'd say the interior to the building really is necessarily something like Charles River Landing where you actually walk out and you go into the parking, you know, there's a facade that looks like the building, is that interior of the building, I don't know, I'm not sure it is.
What about screened by the building?
I think we could certainly say screened, um, but, you know, it's hard to say, you're not, you know, there might, it might be screened to some extent, but I don't think, I don't think the zoning could absolutely commit the buildings to be around it, for example. For example, the MBTA tracks, right, there may, you still have to have the twenty feet there. That side could be exposed, for example, I don't, again, I'm, we don't, I don't know.
Artie, any thoughts?
Well. Again, it's a math problem, it sounds like what we're talking about, I mean, that that's, that's, it's a math problem. I mean, I suppose, you know, obviously, there's a design visual problem. And so, Tim, you bring up something, you know, what about the MBTA community side, and we're talking about, you know, screened by the building? If it's screened by the building, you know, perhaps we give a percentage of it has to be screened by the building, I suppose. And and if there was an entrance to it, and and if there was an entrance to the parking, it cannot be on Highland Ave. Perhaps, or, you know, I know, I know, Tim, you you were, you were, you were wanting to leave that option open, but talking about it, you know, if there's an entrance to this partially screened by the building, it cannot be, entrance cannot be on Highland Ave, it has to be on some form off of West Street or that something, or something off of West Street somehow, or going along the building, along that twenty foot setback, we can't have a building, but you can have a road, let's call it, entrance over to the entrance into the parking garage. Then that's certainly, something like that is going to be started to be confirmed visually seen as screened by the building. Um, but I I think we, I think we need to put something, I don't think we can just leave it open ended like this and and not count it, I think the idea of screened by the building makes sense, totally, under the building makes sense. But I think we we have to say, we we would have, if it's gonna be as a right, we have to say something.
Is there, is there a reason, Tim, why we couldn't say that, create the as of right for the, for the building itself and then say by special permit, the planning board can allow for structured parking for, and the FAR to increase to a certain agreed upon level to accommodate structured parking that meets certain parameters?
I mean, you wouldn't qualify for your MBTA, I mean, that totally.
Oh, we, I I don't know that that's true.
Well, if you can't park it. I mean, if you can't.
I mean, we've already submitted the M to the M to the MBTA at at a one with with it, with it being exempted out, so I don't understand why an increased FAR and a special permit to let you to go beyond all that would change the calculation for the MBTA Communities Act, it's already been calculated at the one hundred eighty seven at a one.
I'm having a hard time picturing how much above yard parking there will even be at this.
I'm gonna share a second, if I'm allowed to, um, just the site, just so, so, Tim, where, I mean, we have, we have a setback from this house.
A little bit closer than the house, because of the property line, but yeah.
Right, but but we have a setback here, so you're not putting a parking garage right here.
Yeah, can't put anything in there other than open spaces, so.
So the, so then you have the setbacks on this side where you can occupy even more, right, and you have the set, the twenty foot setback from back here, right, so this is the site where, um, I mean, I guess what we would want to prevent is that you make the whole front of the building a parking garage, right, because the whole point is to create a a street edge that that would enhance the neighborhood, right, so if there, if you, if you decided to do parking back here, or, I mean, I don't think we also want a parking garage right here in front, in front of West Street, people are walking in that area, right, we want it to be.
Yeah, so, so why don't I, I mean, obviously, we can keep talking about it, but it's, it seems like I should look at the the language with what you just said in mind and try to come up with some concept that kind of makes sure that, you know, it's not fronting on, or it's not, you know, right up on Highland or right up on West like that.
I mean, there isn't that many square feet less left in the property.
No, I mean, I think the open area you're seeing on the MBTA side is the most likely scenario, but I, you know.
Right, I mean, I mean, that's what I would think it would be, or you would do it in the center of the building, kind of thing, just like, but but at the same time, if we're doing it as of right and
Understood.
And we don't have an, you know, we don't have something in the zoning that allows us to at least understand where it would be reasonable. Um, I don't think the community would be happy with that if the whole, you know, facade was a parking garage.
Yeah, so so maybe what I can do is look at the language and say that, you know, the the inside of the building is carved out, you know, consistent with the and to the extent that the structured parking meets certain parameters, it's also not included in part of the FAR. If it doesn't meet those parameters, it it would be.
Right, and and again, I think, I think, I don't know who mentioned it earlier, but we want this developed and we think this is a great location for housing, so we want to work with you, but we also have to, you know, we also represent the community and understanding what the rules are for for as a right.
Right, and and the other thing, I mean, I'm sure everyone appreciates, just by, and I know this doesn't, we'll still propose language, this doesn't get us there, but just practically, you're not gonna put the units along the MBTA tracks. Right, I mean, there's not, that's where you put your parking, so that, you know, the units aren't facing the tracks, you're gonna want the units along Highland and and that area, so it is clearly the most logical place, we'll, let us look at this, let me think about the words. Um, I think, I hear you, um.
We're totally up for it, we just have to have some rules.
Yep, okay.
And then the 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 last part was about the clarification that limited stair and elevator overruns, mechanical equipment, parapets and architectural screening or ex- it says accepted, but, uh, from the height calculation. So, I think we talked, Lee, that a fif- fifteen foot overrun, which is a typical elevator overrun.
Yeah, fifty foot maximum.
Fifteen feet would be the maximum, but that that, that would be acceptable, I believe, and Paul, Justin and Artie, would you be okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, they're also, this building's also gonna have to meet the the current, um, standards for insulation and hers ratings and all those other things, so there's gonna be certain realities going on here anyway, of what they're gonna have to do, so, yeah. I have no problem with giving them a lot.
Paul, are you okay with that?
Sure, don't we already have that in the current overlay district that we?
No, he, there's no height limit in it. Well, I mean, in this one, and in in the draft for this district, no, there's no height limit in it.
But that's just, but it's specifically for.
For this district, right.
I can, I can make that edit and resubmit it, yep.
And Natasha, kind of circling back to the building book, I think the other thing we talked about was whether there should be a maximum coverage requirement, or whether there should be some kind of minimum open space requirement. Do you want to speak about that?
Yeah, we talked about, um, right now, wherever you have open parking, I believe you have to have a ten percent landscape in that area. Is that correct?
Yeah, and, yeah.
Yeah, so we were saying that the, your, your, uh, the one point three is the forty three percent, um, of the site coverage, so, uh, we were saying that, um, we would like to have a coverage limit of forty five percent on the site, so that gives you a little flexibility.
Uh, let let me look at that, I mean, I think that we had always thought that the, the, from the home process and and the input we provided during that was that that hundred and ten feet, which is very significant and currently used and paved as parking, being devoted to sort of open space uses, was getting at that issue and I mean, certainly without further thought, I'm very apprehensive about adding a coverage beyond that because you're really tying the hands, you know, you're taking that entire left side of the site off the table for any kind of structural things and parking, I mean, you don't have a big site, it's a narrow site, so I'm not, I'm not sure that works, but we can look at it for sure.
This is just for the bulk of the building, this is not for, is that right, Lee?
Well, it's coverage, it's it's a percentage of coverage on the lot.
Which would include parking and all that sort of stuff, I.
It only, only includes structure.
No, it's just the building.
Well, structured parking, it would, no, it would be structured parking, like, for sure.
Yeah, it would, it would be structured parking, yes.
Well, then that's related to your structured, to the parking, to the parking that you're gonna look at.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Um, but we did want to, in in some of the lots, uh, we have a landscape area required. Um, and so we were thinking about having a ten percent landscape area. We we had no, um, no provision for that right now, but I feel, um, we were thinking about that that would be a good idea for this particular lot.
Yeah, we have that actually, Tim, over in in the, um, at the Muzzy site.
Yeah, I I would raise a bit of. Yeah, I, I would raise a bit of a caution flag here, though, um, honestly, because. When we're talking about the changes I've proposed, which do allow. You know, or at least allow you to build the residential you've talked about, these kinds of restrictions. Um, are restrictions and do limit what you can do on the site, so you will inevitably be making it. More restrictive than what you submitted to the MBTA, so I, I think we do. I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, take a look at it, take a look at it with the parking and let us know what you think. We're just thinking of. We want to make this as of right, we want to make, you know, we want to make it a good project for you, but we also have to be sensitive that if everything. Is getting larger, right? We also have to have. Some ideas of, of, you know, of, of how the site would work without having a project.
Yep. Yeah, I, I guess I just want to make sure we don't lose. Sight of a lot of the parameters that. The home, moving the home spent a lot of time to do that, including this hundred and ten open area on that side. You know, a, a, and the setbacks and, and everything, so, you know, there, there, there was thought put into that, obviously, and we.
And we're not trying to create barriers, we're just trying to, you know, if, if this, if, if the one point three and the one point seven seem to work better, then how do we make sure that we understand? What the rules for it is so that it's as of right and we feel comfortable and you feel comfortable that you can build something.
Okay.
I think that's all we have unless you have anything else.
Now. So, you know, I, well, the only thing I would say, well, I'll defer to other members first and then I'll.
And Justin and Artie and Paul, any other comments?
And they're, and they're, just correct me if I'm wrong, there, there's still site plan review, um, even as, right, correct, especially.
Very little, Justin.
But, and that's, well, very, like, exactly, that's, that was my.
I'm gonna be realistic.
No, no, and that was my point before.
We want to work with them, make sure that it works for, for, you know, so that they have flexibility to design something that works for them, but that we also understand. What the rules are a little bit.
No, I, I agree, but I, that, my point before when site plan review was brought up earlier on in the meeting. There, there, it's, it's still very little, um.
Chris Heap is gonna give us a, he was supposed to be here today, but he'll give it to us next time, but again, I, I think the goal is to, is to give. Is to make. You know, work with you to get the right zoning to be able to build something on the site, so we're not trying to create barriers, yeah. Not you, but Justin, just Tim, sorry.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, I'm just, Tim, I, I think it's clear, we want to make sure something is going on here. And you want to make sure something's going on here. And we're just, you know, setting the parameters where they are to make sure everyone's protected. But is that, really, about as simple as that, protect from the hazard right? And make sure that we, you know, we all have a great flexibility for the, uh, for the special permit. Which could, you know, give, give something so much better than maybe, maybe you want from the hazard right? So we just have to, we just have to take, make some cautious, a little cautious, that's all, make sure, make sure we're protected, but we wanted to. Great for the town, great idea for the town, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. So, um, next steps, um. I guess, Lee, so our, our goal, just to kind of restate, would be to have. The edits we're proposing included as part of what the article is that ends up being. Going through the, the, the forty eight process with the planning board. So, I don't know what the meeting schedule is, but my hope would be to get something back to you in short order, addressing the few points we talked about. Um, to the language I had proposed previously. And, and have another conversation with the board in hopes it could be part of that, that article.
Yes, I think that's what the intent is, I mean, um, we. Um, we, we got some comments back from the, you know, we sent the zoning off to, um, the state EO. HCL and we sent, and we sent it also to the Attorney General, we got some comments back from the Attorney General already. Um, we hope to get the comments, we're supposed to get the comments back from the state by. August the first, and, um, then I think we'll, we'll be looking at some proposed, you know, draft changes. I will be working with Chris Heap and Katie King on some draft changes to actually. Update this current draft to reflect the comments that come back from them. Um, and certainly we can also, you know, incorporate your proposed changes in at that point, so the planning board can consider it. Um, at their next meeting in August, was how the schedule is set up.
So when should I have my homework back to you, Lee, to, with the revise?
By the first of August.
First of August, okay. The next Thursday.
Yes, that's, yes, hopefully we'll have, we'll have, we'll have state comments and your comments, and we already have the AG's comments, and we can sit down with all three and figure it out.
Hopefully you'll tell me, you'll have an architect plan in place who can actually see what you mean.
You've got a very talented architect on the board who can interpret.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Tim.
Thank you. Take care, everyone.
You too, thank you. Okay, so I think the last piece of this is the review of the AG comments. Um, which again are not the comments from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, that's gonna come August first with Tim's report. Um, with, that's the completion of the ninety day review.
Yeah, so this is the board remembers, um, when we do zoning, we adopt zoning, um, after, after it's adopted by town meeting. It goes to the Attorney General and they do a review of the, of the zoning just to make sure that it meets, you know, meets their rules and regulations. And so they volunteer to do kind of a pre-review on, uh, the zoning that communities are putting together. To secure compliance or under the MBTA Communities Act. Um, and so they took a look at our zoning and they came back with some, what I think are pretty minor kind of tweaks to make. I think the only significant change that they asked us to address. Is the definition of family, which was an issue that came back when we actually, um, looked at, um, adopting the. ADU article, um, and actually they asked us to look at our definition of family, so I know Chris has reached out to the, um. AG's office to get some samples of some definitions of family that they have found to be suitable. Um, so we'll be looking at that, and so the list, just a, a brief list of the con, of the comments that we got back. From the AG, which is included in your packet, but you can see that most of them is just probably pretty language smithing, I think the only issue is really coming up. Or dealing with the definition of family. And so, um, we hope to, we plan to actually. Do a revised draft of this between now and your next meeting, that addresses the issues that are reflected here and the issues we get back from. Um, the state, um, so that you can consider that at your next meeting. With the goal of getting the articles in the form that they can be formally voted on. And, um, then sent to the select board to start the process. For a public hearing that would be held, I think it's the first Thursday in September.
Any questions on that? Paul, did you have any questions about any specific language or are you okay?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, great. So that concludes the MBTA zoning initiative, and we still, what we do have for the next meeting is to have Chris Heap talk to us about. What our purview is for the, as a right and understand all of that process, which I think is pretty critical for us. Um, okay, so. The next agenda item is the review of the draft charge and committee composition for the large house study. Um, and so. Uh, it was in our packet, it was, um, the draft from July fifteenth. So, does anyone, has anyone been able to review it and have any comments?
I have, I, I've, I've got a couple, um, I think. One of the things that it's important, I think we need to put into the scope, because I think this is really the crux of. Of, um, a lot of. A lot of this is really, um, it's important to put into a, a fiscal impact analysis. I think that should be put into the scope, because we really need to look at, you know, what does a, a, a reduction, you know, twenty to twenty five percent have on the homeowner? What does it have on the cost of a rebuild, uh, from scratch? How does that affect, um, you know? I, I think it's really important to have that as part of the scope, because that, that's gonna be like the crux of then, we can. Then, or the committee then will make recommendations to the planning board based on those, so that we can actually make an informed decision, um. And then also, um, let me see, uh, we should probably somehow put in there, um, you know, hydrological impact, um, non, non-pervious services. I mean, like I said, this is not a, this is not about. Environment, it's not about affordability, it's about our, you know, our scope is really with regards to the large houses. But I, I believe those larger houses do have an impact, um, you know, on, uh, the hydrology of the area, larger concrete foundations. Um, and I think what's also important, I know it's not our purview, as mentioned by Mr. Albert and, 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 uh, other previous meetings. But I think it's important that we need and quantify our work with the select board on getting them to do a tree by law. Because I think this is also, it's, it's along the same, um, you know, we, we, we need to hit it at all, all different, um. All different sides, so I think that's kind of important to somehow make it into this document, that, you know, it, it will be part of the scope and, and, um. That's, that's kind of all I had there.
Thank you, Justin, Artie?
I mean, at some point, I was hoping perhaps we'd have something from May, but I do not think that's practical. Um, with everything going on, with the work we have to do with the MBTA Community Act, the, uh, the, the resources we have. Available in our time and available, so yes, so I'm, I'm okay with then looking for October of next year.
Right, so that, just for, for everyone, the target timeframe is to the charge and introduction of committee, October twenty twenty four. Um, and then, uh, background research, researcher prior completed reports and review of other community approaches. Um, October through January, uh, initial presentation of findings to the planning board. And mid-February, prepare recommendations to planning board is in March. And then, planning board and study committee work to prepare zoning bylaw, April through July, and the warrant article will be October of twenty twenty five.
And to go along with. Finish my comments, I agree with Justin, we have to bring more, um, more understanding into the scope of what we're doing here. How much, how much we, this committee or working group is dealing with it themselves. Versus bringing information from the outside, like the select board, the tree bylaws being worked on, and some, how that integrates with everything that we're doing. Because it is, it is a full integration, and I, I understand the economic aspect of it. And the economic aspect goes with both sides, it's everything, it's everyone around us, what's happening with that. How we focus that, I'm not sure right now, but we do have to look at many things, the footprint. Yeah, could be environmental, so I agree with you, Justin. Bring everything into it.
Right. Paul?
Yeah, um, actually, I had two comments. One, one was a typo and. I was rushing to look at it before and I said, okay, I'll have to find it later, and I can't find it again now, this is just a typo where. The word two. Is spelled T O, where it should have been T O O.
Okay.
Find it now, but somewhere in this document.
We'll do, we'll do a word search and find it.
But my other comment was, I was reading this. And. I was reading the background. About. You know, the first paragraph under. Background. And then, to address the, the teardown issue, and I was saying, you know. We need to drop the other shoe as to why the planning board. Feels that. Tear downs are still an issue that. For, for, for the planning board, and then I got to it. Um, later, I got to, current observations suggest that the reforms adopted in twenty four, twenty seventeen. Were not meeting the town's current planning goals and should be further revised to limit. And or disincentivize tear down and or incentivize additional build out activity. Specifically, the current bylaw regulations are overly permissive and, and, and do not appropriate, regulate housing size. I think that should be moved up to. Right after the first paragraph on the background, so that it's clear that that's the reason, that's where we have a problem.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Paul? That was it?
That was it.
So, so I, um, and then I. I have a couple of comments, and I guess this is related to. Um, our current, our, our recent discussion about landscape on our, on South Street, right? That South Street project and all of that, um, and. Should landscape be, and Paul, we had this discussion that it wasn't in our purview, but should landscape be reviewed? And, and, and the, again, talking, based on what Justin just said about the tree bylaw and the stormwater by, you know, stormwater. Uh, views that, that. Committee that's, that the select board has been charged to look at and all of that, so. Should those things be in, in this kind of? Background where, you know, we have had conditions where we don't have a tree bylaw. And, and, and we were concerned about stormwater, should that be specifically in the charge of this? Or is, does, is the charge created by the large house review study committee? Or the, the general purpose, should be a part of the general purpose?
I thought the purpose of this was to deal with the, with the house size and that the stormwater was being looked at by another committee. And that the tree bylaw would be done under the jurisdiction of the selectmen, so I didn't have this committee. Focusing on that, I mean, certainly coordinating with those other efforts, but not, um.
Maybe we should say that, that it should be coordinating with those efforts, because we don't want it to fall by the wayside. That we're only looking at massing and we're not looking at all of these other pieces, right?
So basically, this to, to call out with these, that this other group has been created and that this entity should be coordinating with them?
I think so, I mean, it doesn't hurt, right?
Right, it's fine.
I agree, because we can't, we, we can't get around, get away from the fact that. These large houses and, you know, either the teardowns that create large houses, they all have an impact, this is, it's all in, uh, integrally tied in, so. While, yes, we're not the ones driving the, the, the stormwater bylaw, or the, you know, stormwater bylaw, or the tree bylaw. We need to ensure that we're working with the other boards.
We're collaborating.
Yeah, we're gonna collaborate and everything has to kind of work holistically together, so that, you know, we can come up with some meaningful, um. You know, meaningful. Regulation that we can bring to town meeting to see if, um, you know, we can, we can kind of fix some of these issues.
Yeah, and the tree, the tree bylaw has to be integral to what we're doing here. And if we, if, if we were dealing with trees ourselves, well, that it's a large house, well, that would be, that would be, that would be. You know, almost something maybe conscious, we don't, we would want it to be contradictory to what the select board is doing with the tree bylaw. We want them to be integrated in, we, we want that to be integrated, we want the select board, tree bylaw, to be integrated into what we're doing, the purpose and what we're doing.
Correct, and, and if you're, if, if a developer is limited to the amount of trees that they're able to cut down, that's going to limit the size of the box that they're gonna put, but, you know, put up. Which is going to have a fiscal impact, so it's all, it all is tied.
All related, it's.
It's all related, correct, so we just need to be, you know, coordinated in that, so. Uh, every, and I think that should be put out, whether that's in the background or it's specifically a bullet item as a charge, I don't, I don't think that truly matters. But I think it needs to be, um, I think. You know, I think the fiscal impact analysis needs to be a bullet item in the, in the, in the charge, um, but, you know, I'm perfectly.
The project scope, the project.
With the project scope.
Charge is gonna be created by the committee, but the project scope should probably say to review.
Yeah.
Okay, and maybe that's where it also says, the project scope is to coordinate with current efforts that are occurring, right, with.
Relate the trees.
Yep. And stormwater.
And stormwater, right. Um, one other question in general is, uh, you know, we, 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 we put together the ADU, hi, Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, um. The problem we have on South Street is a subdivision problem. Where we didn't talk about landscaping when we approved the subdivision. When you have your typical. Single home construction.
Mm-hmm.
My understanding. That in your typical single home construction. Planning board doesn't get involved. The ZBA doesn't get involved. The developer draws a plan to build a house, presents it to the building commissioner, the building commissioner looks at it, says you've complied with our bylaws. Go build your house.
Right. And we don't, we never see it unless there's something. Or there's.
The A never sees it, I don't see where we can include landscaping. Be, because now you're talking about having a board approve. A developer's landscaping around a single family house where they're not in front of us to begin with.
Well, we, we can, we can, we can, I mean, that all about this.
I don't want to start bringing single family houses in front of us.
No, 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 that's not, but we're saying if you're looking at it, you should coordinate with all these other efforts that are happening when you're looking at. Right? They're not for us necessarily.
I mean, they're not bringing it before us because of the setbacks either, but we're setting the setbacks here. Then the building department is implementing those bylaws that we're setting.
Is the building commissioner going to approve a landscaping plan?
I, I, I'm not referring to. I, I'm not thinking of landscaping directly right now, I'm actually thinking of trees potentially, trees coming down.
A tree bylaw, we've got to convince. The, the, the select board.
Yeah, and I think we should, we should let the committee, the, the large house review study committee that we're putting together, do some research on all of these things and. Talk, you know, and we're gonna have two select board members, so. Maybe, maybe I can. Go into that where the membership, and this is based on what was done for the last committee, is that true, Lee?
Yes, with the exception of adding, um, um, to, I moved it from one select board member to two. Cause I think that worked very well when we did, um, homework, having two. Cause I think that worked very well when we did, um, homework, having two select board members. So, um, I increased it. Other than that, it's, it's the same framework as what we had used the last time.
Yes, so we have two members. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm, I'm glad that you said members or designees.
Right.
So I don't know if she's still there. Um, let me see, participants, no, I, it's, uh.
They're both here.
So Jean, if you're interested. We've got a designee. Who's going to choose the residents?
Well, who's gonna, so, so just in general, I just want to make sure two members of the planning board, two members. Or designees, these are members or designees of the board of, it says board of selectmen, we should change.
Yeah, it should say selectmen.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I, I, so I reverted back to an earlier time.
It's okay. One member, designee of the design review board, one of the finance committee, uh, they're all members or designees. One of the historic commission, one zoning board of appeals, one league of women voters. One real estate broker, one developer, one architect and two citizens at large.
Right. Who's going to choose those people?
I thought the planning, I thought you would. You're, you're, you're pointing.
Well, then we should say that here to be chosen by the planning board.
Yeah, I think so.
So, so I, I just want to understand process. So the, the, the select board. We, um. We asked the select board to provide two members or designees from the select board. Okay. And then the design review board, one member. So for all of these committees or commissions or, uh, boards, we, we ask them to, to propose someone. As a member or designate, the real estate broker, do we? The real estate broker, the developer, the architect and the two citizens at large, are those designated by us?
I would say yes.
Okay.
And we would advertise it and get people to apply for those positions and then you guys would choose who you're going to appoint.
Okay.
When I sat in, as the transportation committee, I was the planning board's designee. I had to interview and, and all of that, so.
And they still let you win?
They still let me in. Yes, I know. I know. Seriously, that was the beginning of my, uh.
Okay, so. I, I'm fine with the mem, with the membership of it, of the fourteen members. Is anyone? Opposed to it or?
Nope.
Have you ever had the, anyone from the conservation commission on any of these before, Lee? I was just thinking just.
No, we didn't last time. That doesn't mean it doesn't, we didn't have it last time.
I think that might be an interesting, um, add. Add to it.
It, wh- while, while it's interesting, um. Fifteen people.
Yeah, I know.
Is it, is it, is an awfully hard group number to manage. And, and I think that, I think CONCON should be consulted by the select board in the tree bylaw. Um, you know, uh, uh, subcommittee or however they're going to, to, to deal with that, but. Um, and I think that, yes, perhaps we can bring, we can ask the CONCON for, to opine on, you know, something, but to actually have them as a, as a, a regular member. We're, we're, we're achieving, you know, from a span of control perspective, from just a, you know, a, running a meeting. Fourteen people is still, um, still going to be a challenge, but, um, that's where I would kind of just, let's put the limit on there. Or we remove one of each other.
He, he.
I'm okay with the way it is and having the, I think, I think it makes sense. I just wanted to bring it up, just.
Lee, did we have a member of the League of Women Voters last time on the, on the?
We did. I don't know if we still need to, I mean.
Yeah, that's a question, what?
Cause we, cause we didn't have that on home, so I don't know if we need to carry that forward.
I would say, just thinking about what Justin just said, keeping the group.
Smaller.
Smaller is better.
Yeah, and also, and I, I think having an odd number two is probably better just because of, you know, technically voting, you wouldn't want to have a tie.
Yeah, okay. I'm okay with that if everyone else is okay with that. Not that we don't love the League of Women Voters, it's just that we're trying to keep it.
No, and we have two citizens at large, so there could be a citizen that is also a member of the, or a league and that's perfectly fine.
Okay, that's good to me. Are you okay, Paul, with that change? Okay.
Um, I just found that typo.
Oh, oh, good.
If you look under project scope. Uh, item number six. Review the current FAR definition to determine whether it is too permissive.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Jean, Paul is making you proud.
I know, I thought, I thought I was not going to be.
Jean, look at what you're making me do.
Who's going to take up the mantle, Paul? Paul, Paul, you better start training something, someone now for next year, who's going to take up the mantle.
Okay, so that's the review of the draft change in committee composition. Do we need to vote on this?
Um, why don't I revise it? Well, or you want to vote it as revised and then we're done? I'll send you.
There's a motion to, to approve.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, so, Artie. And Paul seconded. So all in favor, say, do I need to call everyone? Roll call, right? So, um, Justin?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Natasha, the chair says aye. So, um, the motion passed, so Lee, you're making the changes and we will review it at the next meeting?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you the final on it.
Okay. And I'm, I'm sure that, um, Adam is not here today, but if he has any questions, he can, um, or, you know, any comments, hopefully he will send them to us.
Is our next meeting August fourteenth?
Yes. Thank you, Alex.
I may not be able to make it. I don't know yet whether I'm taking that as a vacation day and starting my vacation that early.
Okay, we're voting on the zoning that night, just so you know.
Hmm, I vote yes.
Well, you'll give your comments before you leave, right? I mean.
Yes.
Any issues you have.
Can you do it remotely? Just via Zoom?
I, it depends where I am. I'm, I'm not, you know. I'm going to be visiting a friend from California who is going to be in Rhode Island during that week. And we're planning to go down there and visit, uh. And I don't know yet which days we're doing that. And it may be that Wednesday.
It may be weather related too.
It may be.
So, so Paul, if you, if you know, when you know for sure, just send us any comments if you have any comments based on the packet.
Yep.
That's always really helpful. Okay.
And while we're thinking about our next meeting, let me just, um, if you don't mind, Natasha.
No, we're going to report from planning, but we have one A in our plan. Do you want to do that quickly? And then we'll just go to report from planning board?
Is the, I, Alex, I forgot to check with you. Is it, is the applicant going to be here? Do you want me to?
I don't think he is here. So, but I'll pull it up just one second.
And Lee in engineering has reviewed this and approved it, so it's. We should have minimal comments, I assume, if, if everything is approved.
We, we've, we've gone through all kinds of changes on this plan. It's fine. So basically, I think there are two existing houses, um, and they're, um. Reconfiguring the property lines to, um, and doing a land swap with this parcel A, um, to go to lot two, to create an additional building lot. So you have two houses on two lots that are basically being converted, it's being subdivided to now create, um, three lots. With a trans, by, by this parcel A being, um, transferred over to lot two. And all the lots have the required frontage on a public way. And, um, they, they, the existing lot is actually. Non-conforming currently, this lot three A is non-conforming relative to lot width and to a side yard setback. But those dimensions are not being changed. Um, so the non-conformity is not being increased. And the lots have the required frontage on a way, so, um, it's entitled to an A and R endorsement. It's been reviewed by engineering, it's been reviewed by the building inspector and it's been reviewed by planning.
Any questions?
I know, I know that's a very extremely difficult lot. I know someone who, who, who lived there. And it's a very difficult lot, so I can understand why someone is doing this to make, to make something happen in that, that property area. Makes sense to me.
Yeah, my comment really has nothing to do with our jurisdiction. Um, you know, I went over it, um, and I finally figured out what they were doing. But they've got so many lines here. Um, with all kinds of dimensional lines and all kinds of things going back and forth. I had a difficult time looking at this plan and figuring out where the actual new lot lines are. I finally did do it, but my reaction was if I were a lawyer representing a buyer of one of these new lots. I wouldn't be sure that I knew what my client was buying by looking at this plan.
I think these are the lot lines here, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, 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 but, but, you know, just.
Yeah, it's super complicated. Yeah.
Complicated and, you know, I think they've got so many, so, so many dimensional lines going all over the place that, you know, it, it's.
Well, it's because they have it like a, they have an easement here, right? An easement going through the different lots, yeah.
Yeah, but that's got nothing to do with the fact that they presented a plan asking for. Asking for us to sign an A and R and they're entitled to the A and R.
Right.
Yeah, they really didn't need to show the building envelopes and then, I mean, that didn't have to be on there. That kind of creates a little confusion.
Yeah, it created a lot of confusion.
Yes, it is. You have to, you have to really look at it to look at all that.
And they've got these distance lines.
Yeah.
Like. There's a distance line from the existing dwelling to Central Avenue that's cutting right through the description of lot three A. You know, and I'm going, okay, you know, wh- what's going? What's lot three A? And, you know, parcel A where they have the words parcel A, point, pointing to where parcel A is. I went, oh, that's what parcel A is. I thought parcel A was up there in the middle of the, of the drain adjustment.
I know, it's very confusing, but.
Yeah, it, it, it's a very confusing drawing, it's a very confusing plan. But as I said, that's got nothing to do with the fact that they're asking us to, to sign an A and R where they're entitled to the A and R.
Right.
So I moved that we approve.
With that, is there a motion to endorse the plan? Is that you, Paul?
I just made that motion.
Second.
Okay, great. Um, so let's, let's take a vote. Justin?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I, Natasha's aye. So, um. So I guess we, the motion, um, stands and anything else that we need to do on this, Lee?
Yes, you need to sign the plan. So, um, I. Asked somebody in our office, because Lee and I are both remote tomorrow. I'm supposed to be in, but I'm sick, so. Um, hopefully, maybe just don't come first thing in the morning tomorrow, or even come next week. We have summer hours, so we close early on, um, Fridays. So I don't know what your schedules are, but just to the, as soon as you can get in to sign the plan, um, that would be great. I need. Three signatures, so, um, as soon as I get three, I'll email whoever didn't come and let them know they're off the hook.
Timing.
I may be able to go.
I'll probably be with somebody there, eight thirty.
They should be there, somebody should be there at eight in the summer.
Okay, so.
Except tomorrow, I just don't know. I emailed somebody to leave it out. Okay.
I'm working from home tomorrow, so I can, I can make my way over.
I can also.
Awesome. Thanks. Thank you.
I'll be back on Monday. I can come over if needed.
All right.
Okay, great. So it sounds like we'll get it done by early next week. That's awesome.
Have to do it tomorrow. I'm going to forget. Okay. Um, okay, anything else? Alex, you had anything else from, from any of the planning board members or from Lee or Alex?
I have a scheduling thing.
Yeah, you, you want to do the schedule, fine, you can.
Sure. Um, so we have two applications for, one for a special permit amendment and one for a subdivision that came in. And, um, once September hits, we're going to be crazy. I mean, not that we're not already, but. We've got the hearing for home on September fifth. And then, um, the housing authority is aiming for September twenty fourth. And then we're leaving September seventeenth, um, in between those two in case we needed to do anything else with home. So we had a meeting being held, um, we were holding for August twenty seventh in case we needed it. And I am afraid I think we might need it. So, um. Either if you're able to confirm that that still works now, or if you're not able to now, if you could just. Um, I could send out an email and remind everybody to, um. Kind of double check. It's, I, this should be in your calendars, I think, as a hold, but, um.
I've got it there.
It's fine by me.
The twenty seventh of August.
Oh, twenty seventh of August. No, okay.
So I've got September fifth, September tenth. Do we have a meeting September tenth?
No, we don't.
Okay, so that, so I can take that one off.
Yes.
Delete that one.
If it's from me, I'll make a point to delete it, but I thought I caught up with all that.
I have it in my calendar.
Okay, September seventeenth, we're meeting on Tuesday, the seventeenth?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a hold on September twenty fourth.
That is ago now.
That's something.
Yeah, I, I had changed it to confirmed.
I saw it's confirmed, yeah.
Oh, confirmed, okay.
But it still says planning board meeting if needed, because it still says the original title, which is.
Sorry, okay, that is confusing. I'll change that.
It also has location to be determined.
Yeah, I think that is still. To be determined. I'll, I'll let you know.
I see here that we have an October eighth meeting. I may have a conflict with that date, because I have to.
Okay.
So is there any chance that we can? Move that one?
When's, oh, I've got, so town meeting is October twenty one.
Yep. Um. Maybe let Lee and me take a look at the calendar. I don't want to, um. Choose another date without looking at the home's schedule and the special, the special town meeting schedule. Um, I'm sure there, I'm sure that we can accommodate and be flexible. I just don't know if we need to. Have a certain timeline be met, so maybe I'll send an email out on that one, or we can talk, um. In August or either which way, but, um. So we'll, we'll take a look at October, but anyway, for now, it sounds like everybody's okay with August twenty seventh. You were holding it anyway, I think so. Okay, great. Thank you. We'll have some hearings that night.
Yeah, why don't you send it? Because I, so Adam's not here right now, so why don't you send all of the dates? And that way we can all make sure that everyone's available for all or most, right?
I'll, I'll send them through September and then, um, Lee and I will have a conversation about October and I'll send a separate. Doodle poll or something to figure out October.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, so is there a motion to close the meeting?
Some move.
Second.
Okay, Artie and then Justin seconded. Okay, so, um, just go down, roll, Paul, Paul?
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
And myself, chair, aye. So, um, thank you all and, um.
Thank you, Natasha.
Look forward to August fifteenth, right? And we're going to go sign things tomorrow. Okay.
August fourteenth.
Okay, wait, hold on, let me make.